All right, good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Color's meeting to order, I'd like to ask everyone to please rise for the presentation of colors, a pledge allegiance, and moment of silence.
Forward march, forward, march, left, 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 right, 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 left, buddy, hold, left, face, breathe in, colors.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Forward, colors, right, face, forward, march, left, march, left, right, right,
Thank you. I want to thank Como High School JROTC Academy for being here tonight with us. I'd like to start off the meeting by also thanking everyone here tonight for joining us, especially all of you in red, thank you for being here, we certainly appreciate your dedication to the parish, and please know that board members are always available if you need to speak to us on any issues at hand. So, thank you so much again for being here. I'd also like to remind everyone here tonight that once we get to our action agenda item, any item on the agenda that we're going to vote on, the public is allowed to speak on. We'll ask you to please, if you want to speak on an item, come up to the podium, make sure that the microphone is on, tell us your name, please speak clearly into the microphone, and remember that we'd like you to limit your comments, your comments, to three minutes. Thank you. Fellow board members, do we have any additions to the agenda? Hearing none, item 1.4, opening comments, Dr. Aguilar.
Thank you. Members of the board, we are roughly in our fourth week of school, at this point, we've had what I believe is a very successful opening with classroom routines being well-established and standards-based instruction taking place. Mrs. Trossclaire and her academic team have been visiting schools and conducting comprehensive walkthroughs in order to provide principals with feedback and recommendations as they relate to administrative and instructional best practices. As I mentioned last month, student enrollment in our schools continues to exceed the October 1 count from last year. The district's MFP count as of today is 30,274 students. This is 339 students above last year's audited October 1 count. When we include the pre-K numbers to our total enrollment, we are educating over 31,000 students in the Lafayette Parish school system. And I want to also mention to the board that from October 1, 2016, to today's date, September 5, 2018, roughly two years' worth of time, we are tracking approximately 725 additional students to the Lafayette Parish school system over the past two years. So, congratulations to you, the board, to our principals, our schools, parents are choosing the Lafayette Parish school system because of the programs and the services that we offer. Finally, the Transportation Department has been able to offset the loss of drivers in July with new replacement drivers. While we are still looking to hire additional bus drivers, I'm pleased to announce that all bus routes are now being covered by our Transportation Department. Additionally, in the next few days, the Transportation Department will officially launch a Facebook page of daily transportation updates. So, I want you to know this Facebook page that you may join immediately will be called the LPSS Daily Transportation Report. This page will allow the Transportation Department to timely post any and all changes to bus routes, including bus numbers that are being substituted, buses that may not run because of mechanical failure or inability to find a driver. We want every parent using Facebook to be able to receive immediate notifications about bus drivers who may be absent, bus drivers who are backing up routes, or other delays that may be occurring as drivers run their routes. When this page runs live, and it's live right now, we encourage all parents, faculty and staff, the community, to join the page to receive the most timely updated information about changes to bus assignments in the district. Once again, the Facebook page is LPSS Daily Transportation Report. I want to call to the board's attention that my staff, along with Risk Management and the HR Department, we are working to be ready to propose modifications to a policy that you have in place called "School Volunteers." We've had far too many individuals that believe that they need to be background-checked in order to visit our schools. We will be bringing to you a policy revision in October that will tier the level of participation by volunteers. The lowest-level tier will be people who simply go to school to participate in school events. Those individuals, in fact, all volunteers, will be asked to sign a volunteer agreement form, that will be the lowest level of documentation. Volunteers that are in place, that serve a purpose to supervise or chaperone students, may be asked to participate in a background check. So, expect that we will bring back to you a revised policy IFCD and the accompanying administrative rule to bring some clarity to this whole discussion about volunteers participating in school affairs. And lastly, we issued a press release recently discussing a new component of the accountability system called Progress Points for Schools. I want you to know that our schools did incredibly well in making sure that our students are achieving their expected annual growth targets. We believe that many of our schools will be labeled in the fall either with an A or a B letter grade for having met the appropriate annual measurable progress for students. And I know that Mr. Angel is going to piggyback on this and talk to you about one of our schools in particular, but I did want to tell you that our schools should be commended for meeting the needs of our students and making sure the vast majority of them are making sure their children are meeting their expected annual growth targets. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Aguilar. I did feel to mention that Mr. Centany is not, excuse me, Mr. Kinesik is not with us tonight, he couldn't be here, which is why I am presiding over the meeting. I'd like to turn it over for a minute to one of my fellow board members, Mr. Angel.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I want to, I'd like to just take a couple of minutes and give you just a little background. I used to be the assistant principal at Austin Elementary School. Mr. Gail Stoots was principal, maybe some of you remember Mr. Stoots, he passed away a few years ago, but I also happened to be a classmate of the parents of the principal at Austin Elementary School. And I'm telling you, Ms. Claus, and I'm telling you that because I want you to know it's kind of got a special place in my heart, Austin Elementary does. As I was reading the paper, I don't remember if it was Friday or Monday, I read where all of the LEAP scores in terms of progression were listed, and Austin Elementary had the highest level of progression or improvement than all of the other schools in Lafayette Parish, in English, E-L-A. And then the second-to-highest in math. So, I was very, it was very heartfelt of me to see that, you know, we're doing what we can to help our children improve and be ready. I think it's all about being ready for when they get to the eighth grade or to high school, and we're doing, we're doing a good job. So, I just want to read this quick paragraph concerning this announcement. "The Department of Education issued a release of the 2017-18 Top Growth School Systems in the state. The state was divided into five regions. Lafayette Parish was assigned the Acadiana Region. This region consists of 21 parishes. The Louisiana Department of Education named Austin Elementary as an 'outstanding school' for the percentage of students meeting or exceeding individual growth targets assigned by the state on the 2017-18 LEAP assessment tests. A total of 66% of the students in grades four and five met or exceeded their individual growth targets in both E-L-A and math. This was the only school in Lafayette Parish to receive this recognition statewide." I want to thank Mrs. Claus, her staff, and especially the students at Austin Elementary. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, I would like also to congratulate everyone. This is a huge honor for the entire Lafayette Parish. It shows what our students, our teachers, our principals, what we're doing, we're moving forward every day, and everyone knows about it and see it. So, congratulations to everyone and all the schools that have made gains, because there are several schools that have made gains. So, congratulations to everyone, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Information items, item 2.1, Human Resources Personnel Changes for September, Ms. Thibodeau.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Aguilar, I have the pleasure tonight to introduce to you the new superintendent of Transportation, Jonathan Watson. Mr. Watson, Mr. Watson graduated from UL Lafayette in General Studies in 1995, and he then began his career as a transportation manager for Conco Food Service. Next, he served as the Assistant Director of Transportation in Lafayette Parish in January 2008 until August 2013, when he left to become the Logistics Manager and Vice President of Human Resources for Scott Logistics. At Scott Logistics, he negotiated carries to maximize profitability, he secured equipment for loads, and managed human resources for 25 employees. Welcome back, Mr. Watson.
First of all, I want to thank the board for this opportunity. Thank you so much. I'm looking forward to being part of the system and help grow transportation in the right direction. I came back because this is who I am, for no other reason but that. I feel I can make a difference. I've been here a week now at this point, and I've hit the ground up and running, I've been having fun. So, like I said, it's who I am, I believe in the system, and I can assure you, every day when I make a decision, it will be based on those children, the safety of those children that we transport each and every day. Okay? So, I feel if I make that, my decisions in that way, we'll be okay. So, again, I want to thank the board for this opportunity, I'm looking forward to it, and I'm having fun.
Item 2.2, Finance, List of Bids Approved to Be Advertised by the Superintendent.
Sorry, we have one bid, which is for paperback books.
All right, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. At this time, I'm going to read each item one at a time. Board members, if you want an item pulled for further discussion, please let me know. To the public, any item that is not pulled from the agenda during this process, you will have an opportunity to get up and speak on immediately after I read through all of the items. Any item that is pulled will be discussed a little later in the meeting. Item 3.1, Provide Bus Service on District-Wide Half-Days. Mr. Centany. Approval of Bids for Playground Pavilions, Package 1. Item 3.3, Approval of Bids for Playground Pavilions, Package 2. 3.4, Approval of Bids for WD and Mary Baker Smith Career Center, Jim HVAC. Approval of BO Elementary Change Order for Additional Classrooms. 3.6, Approval of Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire for Fiscal Year 2018. 3.7, Sales Tax Collection Report for July 2018. 3.8, Grant Fund Summary, August 2018. 3.9, 2019 Construction Fund Budget, 2018, 2019. 3.10, Budget to Actual Reports, August 2018. 3.11, 2017-18 Final Budget Revisions for Applicable Funds. Pull that, please. 3.12, Approval Bid Award, Paperback Books Bid Number 38-19. 3.13, Resolution 09-18-1941, Adoption of Millage Rates for 2018. 3.14, Gear Up Program Supervisor Position Job Description. 3.15, LPSS Reorganization of Staff, Phase 2. 3.16, Addition of Eight School Bus Driver Positions. 3.17, Approval of the Revisions to the 2018-19 Salary Schedule booklet. 3.18, Child Nutrition Program Management, that's Policy EE. 3.19, Policy IDDH, English Language Learner. 3.20, Policy IFD, Parent and Family Engagement. 3.21, Policy IFDA, Parental Rights, Student Rights of Privacy. 3.22, Policy JR, Student Privacy and Educational Records. 3.23, Policy EGAA, Workers Compensation. 3.24, Policy DJED, Bids and Quotations. 3.25, Operational Supplement for Bus Owners. 3.26, Elimination of Selected Policies from the G Section of the Policy Manual. 3.27, Voluntary Benefits Administration. I'd like to pull that. 3.28, Contract Extension for the Internet Services and WAN. 3.29, Approval of Minutes. 3.30, Approval of All, well, Consent Items. Mr. Lachale.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve all items not pulled from the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Mr. Lachale, second by Ms. Angel, to approve all items not pulled from the consent agenda. Do we have any public discussion comments on any items not pulled for further discussion? Mr. Centany.
I'd like to ask about number 28, the extension for the Internet service and WAN. Is Ms. Dickerson here?
It'd be Ms. Keely or Mr. Spencer.
Oh, that's right. Okay, that's right. Whoever can answer a simple question about this. If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Spencer, we approved, we changed from LUS Fiber to these two companies back in 2015 through the E-Rate process, one final extension is what this says, so next year, we will be going through the same process where we bid out our Internet and...
Yes, sir. We bid it out one year from now. We'll be working on the paperwork in a year.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other board member comments or questions? Appreciate y'all very much.
8-4, Nen against.
Motion carries. Madam Secretary, I'd like to take up item 3.27, Risk Management, Voluntary Benefits And I pulled that item, I'd like to make a motion that the board approve the appointment of educational benefits as the broker of record for voluntary employee benefits.
All right, do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Ms. Morrison seconded that motion. All right, do we have any comments from the public on that motion? Or Mr. Broussard?
Go ahead.
This is on the insurance agenda item, 3.27. All right, no public comments. Board?
Yes.
Mr. Centany or Mr. Broussard?
I thought I pulled it, you pulled 3.7. Yes. But for, that's a question about how did we get to this point? I'm not going to vote to support that. Matter of fact, I thought I'd pull it, instead of you did, I want to pull it to table it. So, if I'm in order, and explain the reasons why. I've got several phone calls concerning how we got there, and the concern was we didn't do due process. The committee wasn't notified, the committee did not research this, and if we want to be transparent, I think we should have gone through that due process. I don't know how we got to it, maybe you can explain how and why, but that's, so that's, I wanted to, if I can make a motion, a substitute motion, to table this until the committee has gotten a chance to meet, to go through the due process it takes to get there, I would do so at this time.
You can make a motion if you'd like.
All right, we have a substitute motion, do we have a second? The substitute motion is to defer this item. Mr. Broussard made a substitute motion to defer this item, I just need a second. Mr. Lachale, seconds.
I'll second it just to...
Ms. Bernard, I understand that you're the person with the information we might need.
Yeah, I'd like to address, it was a question and a motion in the same, if so, I'd like to address...
I'm sure you'll have questions, Ms. Bernard, sir.
I'm sure we will. Mr. Broussard, I'd like to tell you why, how this came about, I'd like to answer your question, and I'm the right person to be able to do that, in hopes that you would actually pull your motion. So, you may remember a couple of years ago, maybe a year and a half or two years ago, that we went through this process. It was not an RFQ, Request for Qualifications, it was not an RFP, Request for Proposals, it was simply just accepting proposals. It did go through the Employee Insurance Committee, also known as the Retiree Insurance Committee, and they heard three proposals, and they made a decision and made a recommendation to use a certain company. All of these companies do the same thing. In fact, you may remember that I came in and I made a different recommendation that we use a local company, and I gave all the reasons why at the time, I'm not going to go through it at this point, and the board voted to approve that recommendation. And then in the very next meeting, several board members, a majority, voted to overturn that decision and go with the recommendation from said committee, because a couple of folks on the committee were, you know, fussing and whining about the decision that was made. Let me, this is a perfect time for me to say that the folks who had a problem with the decision that was made were, in fact, retirees. Voluntary benefits are not available to retirees. Voluntary benefits are paid solely by the employee, the board does not contribute to them, and only employees are eligible for voluntary benefits such as disability. That makes sense, right? Dental, vision, and life insurance products. Retirees may have some of that that they took with them when they retired, but whatever during enrollment, they're not eligible for those benefits. So, the decision was overturned, and you haven't heard a word from me in two years about it. I am, I was on the insurance committee at the time, and I'm still on the insurance committee, and I feel like part of my responsibility and duty is to stay on top of things happening in the system. I frequent the insurance department just as I frequent maintenance department when I was on the facilities committee, and up until probably a week and a half or two weeks ago, I hadn't said a word about this change, right? I accepted it and moved on. However, we have a slew of problems with the company that we have representing our employees right now. And again, I just want to make it clear, it's our responsibility. Employees pay 100% of this, but they can't stand up and say, hey, I want this company. We've got, you know, almost 5,000 employees, so we represent them, this board, the elected board. Not only is this company not following our requests and procedures for open enrollment period and timeframes by, just do what they want. They'll get requests from the insurance department to enroll during certain time periods, and they don't follow those procedures. Not only did they tell us that they had somebody local, which is not true, they wheeled somebody in here who was a local guy, that never came to fruition, we still don't have local presence, okay? They told us that they were going to get us the best price, the best bang for our buck, that is not true, and I'm going to let the insurance folks give you the stats, but that is not accurate. They're selling overlapping benefits to our employees. They've got a short-term disability policy and a long-term disability policy, and those waiting periods overlap. So, if someone happens to get disabled between that period, they're not going to collect on both policies, but they're paying for both policies. I don't see why we're allowing companies like that to do business in this parish. I want to read you a letter that was sent out on August 1st of this year to 210 new employees in the parish. It came from the insurance department. Came from Ms. Bernard, it comes from Ms. Bernard because she's the director of Risk Management. The reference is Orientation with First Financial Group, that's the company we have in place right now. "My staff reported to me their disappointment with the orientation session with First Financial Group at the orientation yesterday. We received feedback from many of you that the representatives with First Financial Group did not explain the benefits and pressured you into completing forms to enroll in the benefits in this session without affording you the opportunity to confer with your spouse or carefully review the plans. I want to offer my sincere apology for the manner in which those sessions were conducted. I want to assure you that this is not standard operating procedure in our insurance department. We pride ourselves in offering excellent customer service, and we are very sorry this happened. It will not happen again. If you need assistance with benefits or have any questions, please call our department or come by our office Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 4:30 PM. We are here to serve you. Welcome to the Lafayette Parish school system." I think it's a disgrace if we have to send out an apology letter to our employees because a company we chose to do business with treats them this way. This committee that is once again telling board members that this is a non-transparent process, this was not an RFQ or an RFP. I am of the opinion, and I would hope that legal could support that, this didn't have to come back before the board. This is a service offered to the school system that the superintendent could frankly approve. So, the transparency is me putting this on the agenda so that you all have the opportunity to have your own say in it publicly, and that we don't have to hide from it. This committee that has stirred this up at the 11th hour is the same committee who gave us the company we have now that is mistreating our employees. So, I'm passionate about this. I'm on the insurance committee. I'm going to continue to do, give 110% to this school system until and unless I'm out of here. It is my responsibility. And I'm not going to let it slide by just because someone's uncomfortable that they didn't get to weigh in on the decision. They got to weigh in on the decision two years ago, and this is what we got. So Mr. Broussard, in short, that's how we got here.
Mr. Hidalgo, I don't disagree with your reasoning. I'm strictly saying process was not done. That's the reason for pulling it. But I'm going to pull my substitute motion and make another motion that we terminate the contract of, who's that? Was it them, the company? Yeah. That we terminate the contract of First Financial Group and ask that committee come back with a recommendation.
Mr. Lashley, do you agree with the change in Mr. Broussard's motion? Since she seconded his original? Okay. All right, do we have any public comment on the reframed motion from Mr. Broussard? Okay, Ms. Bernard?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Shasson had a question for you?
Ms. Bernard, a quick question for you when it comes down to what's being proposed and the two various motions. Would you mind touching base for me just a little bit? I think I pretty much get the gist of maybe what happened with the orientation, but maybe your displeasure or maybe a small explanation as to what happened when it came to this letter? And then your thoughts on what's taking place?
Well, that's just one of the issues that we've had with them most recently. We actually, HR did a survey about the entire orientation process, and it was overwhelmingly negative about their experience with the benefits orientation. So that kind of brought it to a head, if you will. But we've had for the last two years, they're late in remitting premium payments to those companies that insure our people, so we're often getting notices that the group policy is going to be terminated. They are not very nice to our people when they call the customer service line. We've had complaints about that. When it comes to scheduling open enrollment, we have asked more than once to allow us to reach out to our schools and find out what dates are best for them to hold these meetings. And they refuse, saying that they have to man the schedule because it's so difficult to get all their people together. They never opened an office in this town like they promised to, and I could go on and on about the disappointments. Putting off the decision is not the worst thing that can happen, but if you're inclined to make a decision this fall, we can make that happen too. But this company has not served our people well, and quite frankly, we're kind of embarrassed about that. Thank you.
Ms. Bernard, I have no doubt that what Mr. Hidalgo said is correct, but I'd like to hear it from staff as well, that the volunteer benefits are benefits that inure to the current employees, not to retirees.
The retirees port them to individual policies, so they're not serviced by this company. They work only with actives. And the individual policy and its vision and dental that they can take with them and life insurance. So they remit those premiums through their checking accounts.
Okay, so they have no dealings directly with this particular vendor?
Correct.
Uh, Mr. Centany?
I have a couple of questions, Ms. Bernard. What was the date on the letter that you read?
August the 1st.
August 1st. Was any of this information brought to the Employee Insurance Committee?
No, sir, we did not share that with them.
Can you tell me why? I mean, it seems like this would have been the place for the employees' representatives to hear the employees' complaints. And, you know, we're talking about process here, right? And so they could have then brought to us at this particular meeting a recommendation that says this company's terrible and because this is outrageous behavior that they're exhibiting. And then we could have really gone about this, I'm not going to say the right way, but a different way. This could have happened a different way, and I think we could have arrived at the same conclusion. But everybody would have felt involved and consulted. So, because I mean, we're now, what is this, we're 34 days, 35 days since August 1st? So we knew about this on August 1st. And I would say that having the employees' representatives weigh in would be better in the future. The second question is, the timeline for open enrollment, does approving a new broker of record, well, first off, what is the notification period that we must give the existing broker of record to terminate the relationship?
We have to give them 90 days notice, which would be October. We have to give them notice by October.
90 days? That's December.
January 1 is the effective date.
Oh, in October, oh, okay, all right. I thought you were saying we would have it terminated in October.
About the letter and August 1, why I didn't share it? At that time, I had no idea this was going to come up to make a move at this point in time. I really didn't expect that Mr. Hidalgo would encourage us to go ahead and do that now. In my mind, it would have been done after the 1st of the year for the following open enrollment. So I didn't see the need to involve them at that point.
Well, my point is not that you involve the Board members as much as you involve-
No, no, I'm talking about the employee committee, yeah.
I think they should be really notified when any kind of thing like this is happening. So that they can, you know, make sure that the Board is informed with what the people they represent are saying. So back to my other question. So the effective date is January 1st, we have to notify them by-
I'd say October 1st.
By October 1st, so that would be fine. If, when would we have to make a decision on the new broker of record? By what date?
Voluntary benefits are paid for in arrears, so it wouldn't affect till January paycheck. So we can move that voluntary benefit open enrollment if we have to extend it even after the 1st of the year.
Okay, so-
So we can move that. It won't help affect the health at all, the health premium.
No, I think, yes.
Totally different.
Right. So if we did have to go to November before we get, before we feel comfortable making a decision, that will not impact the delivery of these benefits?
No, sir.
Okay, so we are, we're not putting ourselves in a bond or any kind of box by doing this?
No, sir.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Mona?
Yes, sir.
Since the letter has gone out, have you gotten any more feedback from any employees? Any response to the letter?
Only thanking us for, they appreciated that we acknowledged they had a problem. That's the only thing I've heard when people come in since then.
I don't doubt the change is needed. I'm not going to doubt that one is needed. I'm not doubting this is the right way or the wrong way to go about it. I don't think it's a right or a wrong. Not doubt whether it's too quick or not too quick. The company that we would switch to if approved tonight was one that had made a proposal and is local. And that's where my decision stands, you know? Which one of these motions do I vote yes to? I do want a change. I believe everything Mr. Hidalgo's saying. My only concern is, is having had the timeframe of knowing of this, and yes, everything was legal the way it was put on the agenda. It's probably as transparent as it needs to be. But do we need more input back from the actual employees? The actual employees that use this service? Do they want to have a say-so in this? Or would they be fine with us making the change tonight? That's the thing, I don't know. I haven't talked to one single employee, so thank you for answering that question.
Yes, sir.
Madam President-
Mr. Hidalgo?
Oh, thank you. If I could just respond to Mr. Centany, I don't, I feel the need to respond, if that's okay? I don't want anyone to feel like it is staff's, that it's staff's fault that this is on the agenda tonight at what could be arguably the 11th hour. This is, I put this on the agenda. And I did because August 1st, I didn't know about this letter. It wasn't until last week that I found out about what was going on. Now, I'm probably speaking a little bit out of turn, I'm speculating here, but I tend to believe that staff doesn't bring this kind of stuff up because of the turmoil that this kind of stuff causes every time they bring it up. I'm not afraid of turmoil if I know I'm doing the right thing. So I brought it up, and I put it on the agenda because I know in my heart it's the right thing to do. I totally agree with the first part of Mr. Broussard's motion that, you know, someone who is not performing at the best, top level for our employees needs to be fired. But I'm concerned about the timeline. That's my only concern. The reason I brought it up now and not after January is because I don't want any employee to go through the same stuff during open enrollment, which is around the corner. So timeline is definitely an issue for it getting put on the agenda. But from my perspective, it's an issue with, the whole purpose of me putting it on the agenda here in September is to make sure that we make a change before open enrollment. That's the important thing. The benefits can't change now, it's... If y'all need to catch that, that's all right. The benefits can't change now, it's too late for that. But the relationships and the way we treat employees can change, and that's what I want to, I hope that we can change this year before open enrollment starts. So my concern is just the timeline between, you know, getting the committee together so they can do six months of research again to give us a recommendation versus I know that staff was excited when we made the proposal the first time with the recommendation, and then it was undone. Again, that's in the past. There are only three major players in the game. They came to the plate the last go-round. We possibly going to get rid of one of them tonight. So can we expedite this so that open enrollment is with a new, fresh, respectful face this year? That's my concern.
Mr. Broussard?
Again, Mr. Hidalgo-
I'm asking again. I'm asking again.
Yes. I applaud you for putting it on the agenda. It needs to be, it needs to be said that we are not getting the best bang for our buck. And it could have been done last month when we received the negative letter. But Ms. Bernard mentioned we've got 90 days to notify the present vendor that they're terminated. So we got 90 days to work, we can't do it until January 1st anyway. But how we got to this is the question that I'm questioning. I'm not questioning reasons why, and it was done in good taste, and I applaud you for it. So we are doing the best job we can for the employees that pay into it, and we are going to hopefully get a better company for them. But I'm just, for transparent reasons, I just would have loved for the committee to weigh in on some knowledge about it, because that's what we do.
Right. The 90 days is not for, is not for them to come in and perform open enrollment, correct? That is for... Right, that, we don't have to wait 90 days. In other words, we can meet this open enrollment. And while she's coming up to answer that, I want to remind you that the same transparent committee that you're speaking of is the one who gave us the company we have today.
I think what you're asking, we could give broker of record letter to someone else, and it's the administration piece that we have to give them 90 days for. That means the Cobra notices, the activity that they do to manage the account for that contract, they have to have 90 days.
All right, so I have a couple of comments based on what everyone else has said. One is, it sounds like we need to give a 90-day notice to the current company if we're going to terminate their services. So the way that the current motion reads is to immediately terminate. It probably needs to be reworded to say, to give them immediate notice of termination. It says to immediately terminate. We just need to make sure that the way it's carried out complies with the contract and that they aren't just immediately terminated without that appropriate notice. Second part, Mr. Hidalgo, and everyone is, I don't think we can wait until December to choose a new vendor because they need a turnaround time to get things in place, to get the appropriate information and to get things in place. So I think that a decision would have to be made sooner rather than later so that they're ready to roll January 1 for open enrollment. So we need to keep that timeline in place, too. Third, the committee has already done a lot of research, so there's no reason to go and start from scratch. They need to dig up what they've already done and start from there. So it seems to me that as the Insurance Committee wants to kind of look at this again, that perhaps we can kind of compromise here to some degree. Have the Employee Insurance Committee make a recommendation, but with the knowledge that we're going to have something on the agenda for October, for the October meeting. So if they haven't been able to call a meeting and to meet and to make that decision, we're going to be right where we are right now. That does give them time to go back and look at their notes from a couple of years ago for the two remaining vendors and to come back to us. But with that said, my appreciation is that the Employee Insurance Committee is very heavy on retirees and very light on representatives for our current employees. So we may also need a mechanism to reach out to our current employees who use this voluntary benefit service and find out what they want, since they're the ones who are directly impacted rather than the retirees. I'm not sure that it's any better to have the retirees making this recommendation on behalf of employees. So, I mean, that is kind of a conundrum. So is it feasible that the Employee Insurance Committee can meet and make a recommendation that can be on the agenda for the October meeting?
There is a scheduled meeting later this month. I don't remember the exact day, the 25th or 27th. I don't have my calendar in my hands.
Okay, so that would give us sufficient time to put it on the agenda 24 hours before the meeting?
Yes, ma'am, I'll get the notice out tomorrow that they need to go back and look at their notes.
So Mr. Hidalgo? Okay. Mr. Broussard? Okay, and does that comport with what the current motion reads? If that is at the October Board meeting? All right. Okay. And Ms. Bernard, will there be a mechanism to reach out to the current employees, current employees who are enrollees?
Yes, ma'am, I can have-
In addition to the Insurance Committee?
I can ask IT to send out an email to all employees.
All right. Okay, any other Board comment? Dr. Shasson?
Man, it's real tense in here right now. I'm scared to talk. It's scary, it's scary in here, man, the way this all was brought about. I'm scared to talk. Ms. Bernard, quick question for you. First question is, so obviously this company, what's the name of the company currently? First Financial?
Yes.
So obviously they finished first in the scoring rubric that we had?
We didn't have a scoring rubric that I recall, no, sir.
Well, it was just based upon the individual presentations from the companies the committee chose to go with that company?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so just presentations about not what they, was it ba- what was the deciding factor in them choosing this particular company? Like for an individual to sit there and listen to three different presentations, is it the individual presenter and how kind they come off? Or is it what they can offer us? Or, you know, how they're going to go about open enrollment and the services they're going to provide to us?
I can't really speak for the committee, but I'll say from the discussion, it sounded like the sentiment that the presenters were a little more polished than the other two companies, if I recall. And if there are any members here who want to weigh in, I'd certainly defer to them, but that's what I recall.
Is there anything that much more dramatic that an individual company can say that they all do versus the other two companies that were there? That would make a person say, oh, yeah, that's the clear choice. Look at all what they offer versus it just sounds as though this company will have a better time with this company, pretty much?
Well, I would say this, that at the time, what I don't think the committee knew was that First Financial was actually owned by an insurance company. And that is not the sort of vehicle we wanted to bring because that tends to bring conflict of interest in the party. And so I'd say there was some information that was not divulged, that had they known that, they might have made a different choice. But yeah, there are some differences among the three companies we looked at. One, some do some things better than the others.
Okay. So it simply went down to a vote? Like take me through the voting process. Someone said, I make a motion that we go with this particular company. Someone seconded it, and, you know, was there a tally of votes? And they end up being the majority winner, or it's just simply?
It was just a voice vote.
Voice vote?
Mm-hmm, on a motion.
Were there no votes for First Financial?
I don't remember. I don't remember.
You don't remember? Okay.
No, sir.
You don't happen to have the tally of votes, uh, at the time?
I'm sure it's on, in the minutes.
In the minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. Um, so there technically wasn't a second-place finisher, how we're normally, we'll normally see a...
No, no, they didn't rank them. No, sir.
No ranking, okay. So the top three, we chose one, and First Financial is the one that folks are having problems with versus... What's the, what's the current company being recommended? Educational benefits?
Yes.
And they were one of the choices?
They were one of the presenters, yes.
Okay, do you remember who the third presenter was?
Taylor &amp; Sons.
Taylor &amp; Sons, okay. So had not that company been chosen, the one that we currently have, one of the other two would have been, okay. Um, okay, that, that's, that's all, that's all I have, Ms. Bernard. Um, I normally, I normally know the, uh, the process that these things take, being on the board now, I think this is my eighth year, and when there is immediate or dramatic change or something that, that some folks tend to think, oh, well, well, hold on a second, until I can put my exact eyes on it and, and feel it, you know, something's got to be wrong with that. But as far as the process that Mr. Hidalgo has undertaken, I mean, if it's not that company, then one of the other two would have been chosen to, so to go with one of the other companies, I honestly wouldn't have a problem with it. Um, as far as the, what folks are requesting, to have some time to look at it, to have some time to feel it and understand it, even if we reach out to current employees and not the retirees that seem to be heavy on that committee, we also have to take into effect, into account that if we're going to sit there and go through the process again, that it will simply be a group of people in a room's opinion on what the, what the presenter, how he comes across, um, how does he interact with us, what are they, what are they stating to us? And I don't think it can be that much more dramatic or a difference, simply based upon the individual companies can't offer that much more different of a product. So, I mean, I, I'm going to trust Ms. Bernard on this one, that, okay, well, the individual presenters seem to be a little bit more polished than the other individuals. So even if we get all new people to come up, I mean, if I was a company, I would simply want, I'd want the best talker, someone that can make me feel like I'm going to be appreciated, because no one can remotely take into account the fact that they were going to do what they did, which was try to rush us, don't give us time to go and speak to our loved ones. So I, I mean, I'll, I'll stop with that, it's just, either way this goes, I'll be fine, it's just, I don't disagree with you, because even if everyone has an entire year to look at the process, it's still, it's still going to end up being presenters coming and present to a group of people, and they're going to make a recommendation. You have no way to account for what they're going to do after that point. Oh, they're going to rush us, oh, they're not going to be friendly, their customer service is going to be horrible. All we can do is take them for what they have factually, which is, we're going to be here, you tell us the dates, we're going to make those dates, and we offer the same thing that everybody else offers. At that point, you shouldn't have a problem choosing, we shouldn't have a problem choosing one of those folks, let alone having a, an entire group of people go through the process. So I understand what you're saying.
Mr. Angel?
Just want to point out to the, the, Dr. Schessel and the, and the board that, uh, first of all, I didn't realize until tonight that, that they said they were local and they weren't, and they said they would move an office in Lafayette, and they didn't. I didn't realize that, so I, I think, um, however, and, and I, and I agree with you, I, I agree with you in principle. Uh, I, I did give my word that I would delay it so that it could come in front of our committee, the insurance committee, and I'm talking about the board committee, the, the, the employees could, committee can meet whenever they want, but, uh, the only reason I'm going to vote for the substitute motion is because I, I'd like for the, our insurance committee at least to, to have a look at it, and, and, uh, I, I don't think very kindly of people that tell you one thing and do another.
Ms. Bernard, uh, I may have misspoke earlier, open enrollment starts in October rather than January?
Uh, September fifteen to November fifteen typically, but that really is most important for the health plan, which is not affected by this.
Okay. All right, and the October meeting is October third, Dr. Aguilar? Or October tenth, the third? Okay. All right, um, Ms. Morrison?
I agree with Mr. Broussard and Mr. Angel. I think it would only be fair to have the insurance company, the insurance committee, I'm sorry, uh, take a look at it and they come back with a decision in October. I would feel more comfortable making a decision at that time. Thank you.
All right, um, I'm inclined to go ahead and make the decision tonight, so I'm going to vote against the substitute motion, um, but if that passes, then I would strongly encourage Mr. Angel that you schedule the board committee meeting prior to, and well enough in advance that we can, uh, listen to this before the October third meeting. Okay? All right, any other board comments? Dr. Schessel?
I can't help myself, I'm going to shoot myself in the foot with this one, I know I will. I can't help it, can't help it. Um, I understand where you're coming from. Reason to allow the committee to look at it is to give them a fair chance to look at it, but the committee looked at it and basing, basing their decision on everything they had in hand, a company was chosen that we would like to get rid of now. So at that point, it's not to say, it's because, and this is the shooting myself in the foot part, it's not to say, okay, well then why send it back to the committee? I mean, we have the committee for a reason, but that decision was, was, was made, it was sent to us, we didn't like what they, what they've done, so now we should end up making the decision, and it's not to say, oh, well, let's send it back, because honest to God, it can be the same thing, you don't know what a company is going to do, you would think if you're going to make that amount of money, that you're going to do a good job. So to send it back to the committee, to then get the recommendation to come back to us, I, either way, you really can't go wrong, but it's like, it's like the board is basically saying, we're going to make the committee the scapegoat now, because, well, listen, if, well, listen, if, if it happens again, then y'all chose it, that was your recommendation. Meaning, we're a committee, they're a committee, we really can't go wrong here, y'all, so I, I, I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Hidalgo.
All right, if there's no further board comment, then I will call for the vote on the substitute motion.
Thank you. Um, no, three point one was, was pulled? Yeah, three point one was not pulled, yep. Three point eleven is, uh, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, final budget revisions for applicable funds. Mr. Santani, you pulled that out?
I did, Mr. President, I would move that the board approve the final budget revisions for twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen for all funds and strike the transfer from the general fund to the OPEB trust.
Got a motion by Mr. Santani and a second by Mr. Broussard. Repeat that.
Let the board approve all final budget revisions for the seventeen, eighteen fiscal year for all funds and strike the transfer from the general fund to the OPEB trust.
Did you get all that, Madam Secretary? Madam Secretaries? Mr. Broussard?
Sir.
Oh. All right, we have any public comment on Mr. Santani's motion? Board member comment? Mr. Santani?
Mr., Mr. Guidry is there, I hadn't turned around yet at this meeting. Uh, Mr. Guidry, can you confirm that this one point one million dollars will now be moved into the pay-as-you-gon, pay-as-you-go self-funded construction line item, or is it going to be three-quarters of it will be moved automatically?
Uh, we would, I would appreciate, uh, if, if that's the intent, that, uh, your motion be, your motion reflect that, not only strike it, but include it, uh, with the, in the transfer, increase the transfer amount, uh, to the pay, pay-as-you-go, uh, uh, project.
Well, that's not necessarily the intent, I was just curious if that's what the, what the policy that we adopted when we reduced the stabilization fund levels, and we said, we had some language in there about, uh, any surplus of the general fund, some percentage of it would automatically be directed to the pay-as-you-go. If it just stays as a one point one million dollar surplus for fiscal year seventeen, then, or fiscal year eighteen, then I'm, I'm okay with that for right now.
Yes, I, I believe that the, uh, the action that, uh, that the board took back in December, uh, where they authorized or approved, uh, utilization of the fund balance and did so with a two-thirds vote, would, would be the approval for, for these transfers to be made. Uh, so with the motion that you made, uh, I would see it as the one point one million would, would remain, uh, in, in, uh, fund balance, and the other, other two transfers would be made.
Thank you very much.
Hearing none, I'd like to call for the vote.
Seven four, none against.
Motion carries. Again, I want to thank all of you so much for being here this evening, hanging out with us on that, uh, item three point two seven, I appreciate it. Without any other items on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned.